I'd like to call to order the Sparks City Council meeting of Monday, December 12th, 2011, with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
City Attorney Chad Adams.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, next is invocation speaker. If you'd all stand for Pastor Brad Zanino from the Summit Christian Church, please. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you. Would you bow your heads with me? Father, we thank you so much for this day. We do have so much to be grateful for. Lord, in this season, we thank you for getting us to this Christmas season. We thank you for this day. Father, we thank you for the tireless efforts that we see from volunteers through the people that serve in the city council. Father, we are so grateful that we've been blessed with the presence of firemen here today. Lord, we just ask your continued protection over them as well. We thank you for their service, especially through the Collin Ranch fires, Lord, to rebuild and restore our community and serving just tirelessly and very selflessly, Lord. We thank you for them. And Father, as we head into this meeting, we pray for discernment. We pray for wisdom. Would your hand of protection be over everybody here, Lord? And would our hearts be softened to those things that are about us in this community? Father, in this year, it's been tough. It's been a very depleting and probably hopeless feeling for a lot of people in this community. So, Lord, I pray that our hands will be diligent in these meetings, remembering that we need to have compassion. So, Father, as we head into this new year, would you please protect us? Give us wisdom. Extend your hand of grace on us. And there are so many faiths that we're representing here today, Lord. So, would you please watch over this entire community, Lord? Bless this community. We thank you for this beautiful place that you've blessed us with. We thank you today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. If you'd remain standing for the part of allegiance, Mr. Adams, would you lead us, please?
Please try me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is comments from the public. If you want to make a comment under comments from the public, please fill out one of these speaker cards and we'll get you up for three minutes. So, I do have some cards here. I have Bonnie Hadlock. Pardon me? Herlichka? Okay, come on up. Right up front is a chair. No, there's a seat up front. That's all right.
Okay, Juan Bonnie Herlichka, and I'm representing Prime Residential, which we have a property, Park Vista, in Sparks. And I wanted to express that there seems to be a certain disparity in the impact between single-family property owners and multifamily property owners on the way that surge utility is built. Per se, a one-bedroom apartment is billed accordingly as a three-bedroom home. And there is another increase with intent to increase in 2012, and just wanted to see if there could be a better way of doing this that would be more fairly with property of multifamily homes than single-family homes.
Okay. Steve, can you? I see Steve taking notes, so we can get in touch with her, somebody offline here, and discuss this. So, if you want to give Mr. Driscoll your phone number.
Okay.
And then we can contact you and someone will make contact with you in the near future.
Okay.
Okay, next we have William. Sorry, I can't read the last name.
Drake.
Drake? William Drake, you have three minutes.
All right. My name is William Drake, and I'm from Park Vista Apartments. I'm here to discuss the sewer billing. Right now, we're billed at eighty-four forty-one per unit, the same as a home. We have eight hundred apartment homes, so right now, our annual sewer bill is two-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars, which reflects one-third of our total utility costs. For the year 2012, we're expected to receive an increase of just under five percent to eighty, no, 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 eighty-fourty-one, to eighty-eight seventy-three per unit. Going to bring our costs next year up to two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars. That's if we don't experience any other increases. Now, I have eight hundred apartment homes. Four hundred of them are one-bedrooms. Doesn't seem logical or feasible to me that for four hundred one-bedroom apartments, I'll pay the same sewer cost as four hundred five-bedroom houses in the Wingfield area. I'm interested to know how they determine the billing rate, what formulas are used, and what formulas are used to increase the rate, as it seems to be pretty steadily increasing year over year. In 2007, the rate was seventy-four sixteen. So, in 2012, it's going to go up to the eighty-eight-dollar mark, so about fourteen dollars over the time period of about four and a half years. It impacts us greatly. It's one-third of our total utility costs. That's with us running property lights pretty much year-round, from the time it gets dark until the time the sun comes up, heating all of our vacant apartment homes, running our pools, heating the pools and spas, utilities for the office and all of our shops on the property. It just seems, it's about triple what we pay in water. We bill some of that back to the residents, but, for example, last month, our sewer bill was twenty-two thousand dollars. But in order to keep the bills manageable for residents, we only bill back sixteen thousand dollars. That's a six-thousand-dollar monthly bill that we had. We amortize the bills, so we get them quarterly and we bill them out over the three months to the residents, so we can recover some of it, but we can't recover all of it. It's a pretty hefty expense for us. Makes the cost of doing business much higher. In turn, also drives away residents, as they can no longer afford it, because as the rates go up for us, it gets passed on to them as well. Given the light of the current economic situation, we just kind of feel like this is something that needs to be addressed, and we need to maybe come up with a more equitable way to take into account multifamily housing, sewer usage versus single-family housing.
Okay. I think the council voted on a five-year plan of five percent per year for five years, and I think this is the last of the five percent increases per year. I'm not positive that that's true, but we'll be reviewing it again.
Is there going to be any review as to why one homes are going to be the same as housing?
We can make that part of the review. I'm not sure why that is, but again, Mr. Driscoll has, will have your name and he'll be contacting you guys.
No problem.
Okay? And then the last one is David Allworth? All?
Allfirm.
Allfirm?
Allworm.
Allworm, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, David.
Thank you. I'm here for the same reason, basically, to discuss the sewer rates. I represent Cromer Investments that owns and operates eleven-hundred-and-ninety-nine units in Sparks. And there are numerous people behind me that probably own and operate, oh, I guess, twenty-five-hundred to three-thousand units also in Sparks. And again, it's recently just come to light that we started looking into the sewer rates and single-family homes, no matter how large they are, pay the same as, say, a studio apartment. About a fourth of ours are studio apartments. And it just seems like there should be some equity in the usage and the billing rate. And I tried to contact and find out about meetings concerning this, and basically was told by Sparks, whoever I spoke with at Sparks, that I had to log onto the website to find out when things were going to be in the meetings. There are never any notices given out, which is, seems to be an issue to me at least. It sounds like you're going to be moving forward with hopefully a plan that can more equitably distribute the sewer fees, and I'm hoping that there's some way we can all be involved in that and those discussions and everything in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here and bringing it to our attention. I know that when we do review this, we will be getting hold of you sooner than that, I'm sure, but when it comes to reviewing the total package of rates, we'll be going out to the public and we'll make sure that you guys are involved in talking with our people.
Thank you.
Okay? All right. Anyone else? Mr. Carrigan.
Do any of you know how Reno does it? I don't. I'm just asking. Do any of you apartment?
They have a lot of ways to promote. I think it's just single-family homes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, no one else under public comment? Okay, approval of the agenda. I'd like to take four-two and four-three out of order, if you don't mind, get those done and out of here, so if someone could include that in their motion, I'd appreciate it. Other than that, anybody else want to take anything out of order? Looking for a motion. Are we working or not?
I pushed it.
All right, just go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Okay, moved to approve the agenda.
With the exceptions of, what is it, four-one, four-two?
Yes.
Four-two, four-three.
Four-two, four-three, I'm sorry.
Okay, moved to approve the agenda, swapping four-two and four-three. Is that what you're going to do?
Yeah.
Moving it up, okay.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Carrigan, to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Let me see if the voting system is working. Okay, go ahead and vote. Passed unanimously. Next proposal. Okay, next is recommendation to approve minutes of the meeting of November fourteenth, 2011, and the meeting of November twenty-eighth, 2011. Any additions or corrections, deletions? Okay, looking for a motion.
Moved to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve the minutes as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, next is presentation items, consideration process for the council meeting minutes. That's what I just did. Okay, four-point-two is commendation to the Legends at Sparks Marina. Is there someone here? Dennis, I saw you. You want to come on up? Steve, Steve Graham? Okay. Okay, I'll read the commendation, then I'll give it to you. Commendation, whereas twenty-nine homes were destroyed or rendered uninhabitable by the devastating call and fire, and whereas the American Red Cross is providing support to those who lost their homes and belongings in the fire, and whereas the Legends at Sparks Marina is giving a thousand-dollar gift card to those who lost their homes, the cards can be used to purchase clothing, personal items, meals, or whatever each family needs. And whereas in order to receive the thousand-dollar gift card, homeowners must register with the American Red Cross. And whereas, according to management of the Legends at Sparks Marina, this is our way of giving back to the community that supports us. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, join with the city council in commending the Legends at Sparks Marina for their generous gift to victims of the call and fire. Thank you very much. (applause)
First, thanks very much. Most of you know Steve Graham, who's behind me, who represents Red Development. He's the Vice President of Development for Red. Friday afternoon of the fire, it was still burning, and Steve was on the phone with me saying, "We got to get something together. We got to make this work. We've got to do something to give back to the community." I'd like to thank him for helping me push this through and we got our plan together. On behalf of Red, I'd like to thank the mayor, council, and staff for recognizing us as well as your continued support for the Legends project. Red has only done what many or most in the community would have done had they had the ability. I'd like to personally thank Red Development for allowing me to move forward with opportunities such as this, that do allow us to give back to the community. As an ambassador for the Red Cross, I'd also like to thank Carolyn Punches and her team. I called Carolyn on Friday afternoon and said, you know, "How can we make this work?" And my goodness, she must have called me back ten times with different ideas and thoughts. Carolyn and her team are incredible to work with. It was certainly a pleasure, especially Chris Reed with her group. I also feel it's important to mention my conversations with many of the occupants of the twenty-nine homes that were deemed uninhabitable. From a group of five UNR students to a couple married for fifty years that lived in their home for over thirty-five years, most of them all lost everything in a matter of moments. Their common thread was a simple thanks and a smile, but it was also the look in their eyes that couldn't hide the story, which told what they went through. It was almost without exception that I saw the resilience that best exemplifies the human spirit. "We will rebuild," is what I kept hearing. I had the opportunity to share a laugh and a few tears with many, from a woman whose husband was at work when she called him and asked, "Which car should I take? I only have one. It's the vet or the pickup." To a family who said, in a rubble, in a back closet bedroom, they actually found the only salvageable items, which was a cardboard box of photographs that she had stored, and it was their only saving item from the house. Honestly, we're just glad we could help somehow. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, everybody. Thanks to Red Development. These are the kind of things that make our partnerships all worth it, so thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to four-point-three. Chief Lock can accept this? This is a commendation to the Sparks Fire Department. Even though it wasn't our fire, we were there full bore. I know, I got the emails from Chief Lock about how many pieces of equipment and how many firefighters we had and all that kind of good stuff, so I thought it was appropriate to have the commendation for the fire department. Whereas on November eighteenth, the call and fire wrecked havoc, wreaked havoc on the city of Reno and unincorporated areas of Washoe County, burning nearly two thousand acres, destroying thirty homes and damaging forty-two others. And whereas the city of Sparks and numerous and numerous other jurisdictions throughout Nevada and California provided mutual aid to the city of Reno in an effort to gain containment of the fire. And whereas the Sparks Fire Department rose to the challenge and quickly responded with twenty-five firefighting personnel, along with three structure engines, three brush trucks, and one water tender. And whereas the training and expertise of the Sparks firefighters contributed to the containment of one of the worst urban wildfires in recent memory. Their dedication and commitment to saving lives and property was clearly on display during this crisis. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, join with the city council in commending the members of the Sparks Fire Department for their outstanding service to a neighbor in need during the call and fire, and their performance in containing a fire that could have done far greater damage to the Truckee Minnows. (applause) As you stated, on November eighteenth, one-thirty in the morning, we got a call that there was a fire in the city of Reno. We responded, or we requested to respond, one fire engine at that time. Before the evening was over, we had two additional fire engines respond. When morning came, there was another request. We sent three brush trucks and a water tender under the command of Captain Barton. We also sent Division Chief Andy Kosky as a single incident command resource. We had three of our individuals respond after that as part of the Sierra Front Incident Management Team. I personally was able to witness the actions of these individuals. I was not surprised, but as always, impressed by their actions, their heroism, and the hard work that they did. I do have here a number of those members and would like to bring them up as well for your recognition, Mayor. If I could, Division Chief Andy Kosky. Fire apparatus operator Tyler Carson, who was an acting captain on that day. Captain Derek Keller. Firefighter Keith Mullin. Firefighter Chad Richards. Firefighter Matt Caldwell. Captain Jim Reed. And Captain Phil Barton. And if I missed anybody that came in late, please come up front. I, as an administrator, no longer get to put the wet stuff on the red stuff, but these fine individuals do, and they saved many, many homes. And I was very pleased that none of them came back with any significant injuries. A very, very brave evening on all their parts. The risk for personal injury was very high, and the amount of homes they saved was incredible. So, thank you very much on behalf of the Sparks Fire Department for this honor. I know Mayor Kuchel was aware we were doing this today, and he sends his best, too. He said he was up there during some of the fires and saw you guys. Everywhere he looked, he saw the Sparks Fire Department. So, he was very appreciative of what you did. So, thank you, thank you so much. Okay, let's go back to four-point-one. Presentation from the Reno Tahoe Airport Authority on Terminal Refurbishments and Centralized Checkpoint. Mr. Mayberry and Dean. By the way, Dean, congratulations on your new assignment. That's wonderful.
Thank you very much.
You're a great guy, and you deserve that. He's going to be the new COO, I believe, is what?
C-O-O.
C-O-O.
O-O.
Chief Operating Officer. That's a... Anyway, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Adams, Mr. Driscoll. I'm Adam Mayberry. I'm the Community Relations Manager. I'm also one of your appointed trustees to the airport authorities. A pleasure for me to introduce Dean Schultz, airport's new chief operating officer. Dean's going to give you an overview on an exciting project underway at the airport right now. It's a twenty-seven-million-dollar investment, and they're renovating and remodeling the baggage claim to match what the ticketing counter will look like. They'll also be consolidating all the security checkpoints into one location where the current food court is now, and they'll be making some changes upstairs and essentially consolidating most of the food and beverage venues upstairs. Many travelers now want to get through security and experience what the airport has to offer after that point. So, having said that, I'll turn the time over to Dean. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayberry. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city councilors. It's my pleasure to be here, and it's also exciting for me to unveil a new project that the airport is working on for you. My presentation does have a few new slides in it that may be in your package, and I apologize for that, but I wanted to be able to give you the most current information available. And I'm also respectful of your time, so feel free to cut me off, but also feel free to ask any questions as I go through this. So, we'll go ahead and jump right into this. As Adam had said, we are extending that new front door to our community. We are creating a great new first and last impression. We have about four million passengers a year that come through the airport, and it's important to create and provide that great new first and last impression. We are continuing the Tahoe theme that was started in the bag claim area. We're going to continue that image, as you'll see in the images that I'm going to show you in the presentation, throughout the rest of the, at least the main part of the building, not necessarily the concourses. But it's not all about aesthetics. We're also going to make a number of functional improvements at the airport, primarily the centralization of the security checkpoints, which will then also allow us to add some new restaurants and new stores for our visitors. Why are we doing the project? Well, it's an eighteen-month construction project. We have six million dollars in private investment, in addition to the twenty-seven million dollars that Adam had mentioned. And the twenty-seven million dollars will be coming primarily from passenger facility charges. We will not be using any local tax dollars to fund this project, but primarily passenger facility charges, some funds from the Transportation Security Administration, and as I said, the retail provider and the food and beverage provider are also investing six million dollars of their own money on top of the twenty-seven million dollars. And with this economy, the way it is, this is a great opportunity for us to create jobs. We anticipate about two-hundred-and-seventy-five jobs created as a result of this project, so... For those that haven't been out to the airport in the last week, we have started the project. The construction walls began, started going up on December first, and the first part of the project will focus on the baggage claim area, and then once that area is done, we'll be closing the food court and consolidating the checkpoint. So, focusing on what's going on today, we will be remodeling the bag claim area in four phases. Each phase will last about four to six weeks, and between December and April of 2012, we hope to go through that entire process. We are a twenty-four-seven operation, so we are very mindful of the fact that we've got to keep the rental cars, the airlines, taxis, shuttles, everyone operational, and we take that very serious. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute on what we're doing. But here's an image of what the finished product will look like. As we said, it's to carry the ABC, the check-in project image throughout the rest of the building, but we've also incorporated a little bit of the Truckee River, trying to bring that in. The fish will be representative of La Honton cutthroat trout, so we're trying to do a little bit of art in places, but also functional, so... We'll be replacing the carpet with tile. It's much more durable and surface. We'll be wrapping the columns with the stone, wrapping the beams with wood, and toning down that chrome-looking ceiling that we currently have. It's a little bit too much of a Vegas look, so we'll be painting that. The unique shape of it's important to keep, but we're going to be toning that down a little bit. Also, under construction today is a new restaurant in the central core of the building. When the checkpoint gets consolidated, we still need pre-security restaurant food offerings available. The Peet's Coffee will still be available and remain as it is, but we also need a full-service restaurant available. So, in the area where Brighton Store and the Panderosa Pines on the left side of the central area there, we'll be creating this new full-service restaurant. SSP, our food and beverage provider, we've been working with them for several months. They're bringing in a new chef, and so it's going to be a whole new menu offering, much more exciting. A lot more of the food preparation and cooking is going to be done in front of folks, so it's... And they're bringing in local foods, local beverages, and so it's going to be a very nice addition to the airport. On about May, you'll begin to see the checkpoint consolidation work. We have some preparatory work out on the apron that you probably won't see, getting utilities and that, but on about May first, thereabouts, the construction walls will be going up, closing the existing food court, so that we can create this consensual consolidated checkpoint. Now, I want to say real quickly, this is not just a standard checkpoint. We're also working with the TSA to make this a checkpoint of the future. We will be one of only, the only west coast checkpoint of the future, but one of only two in the country where TSA can use this facility to roll out new technologies, try out new procedures, and use this as a beta site for new systems and processes. So, we're very excited about that. We're going to be having to expand this building by about thirty feet out onto the airfield apron in order to accommodate that. The checkpoint will have substantial growth potential in it, above and beyond the demands for the day, so it can serve our purposes for a very long time going into the future. The escalators, those familiar with the building, where you have the B escalators or the C escalators, well, now, once this is finished, the B escalators will both be up escalators for departing passengers. The C escalators will serve as down escalators for the arriving passengers. The C escalators will serve as down escalators for the arriving passengers. On top of the new checkpoint is where we're going to be building the new food court and retail hub. You see here an image. We're going to go with a much more dramatic image. The ceiling in this area will be raised to 18 feet clear height, opening up that area much more dramatically, giving a much more airy, open feel to it. And I'll show you an image from the inside looking out, but we'll be adding about 40 feet on the upper level to accommodate the food court and the retail facilities. Our plan is for completion on April of 2013. We have a large national aviation conference coming to town the first week of May. The American Association of Airport Executives Annual Conference will be here. There'll be in excess of 2,000 of our brethren visiting us, and so we want to have our best outfit on, and so this will be done in April of 2013. As I mentioned, we'll have the best security system in the West, and we'll have a whole new offering of food, beverage, and retail facilities. Well, yes. That's fine. So, are there any questions?
Questions? You can ring in. I think the machine is working, so. Any questions for Dean or for Adam?
Mine's not working. It seems not working all night long.
Mr. Schmidt. Hers is working.
I'm the only one that can.
You're the only one.
Mine's working.
Mine's not working over here.
Go ahead, Ron.
Dean, thank you for your presentation. What's the reasoning for splitting the escalators up and making people go around, either arriving or departing?
Once passengers are screened through the security system, they have to be segregated. And so, if you can see on this image, the actual B escalators now become a part of the checkpoint.
How much additional walking does that mean? People are going to have to do either direction, all the way around through all the new construction and everything else? I mean, that seems like that's going to be a huge area that people have to?
Well, the image is a little bigger than the actual, perhaps. It's about 100 to 150 feet if you're coming from the B escalators, or from the B concourse.
Thank you.
But those arriving passengers from the B gates will have a little longer to walk because they'll be taking those escalators on the north side.
Yeah, it'll be the same thing for the departing passengers. They're going to have to go around, so those in the C gates have to.
It's about 100, 150 feet.
All right, thank you.
If I might, one of the things that I did want to add to the presentation, but unfortunately, was the communication plan. But, you know, for those that remember the Airport Baggage Check-In Project, we take our customers and the customer service very seriously. So, we've got an extensive program. We're going to be bringing back our Construction Wizard, those that love him and those that don't, but he is very, extremely popular. He is an actual construction worker, and he does extremely well, and so we'll be bringing him back. We'll be using all the standard print and TV and newspaper venues, but we're also going to be doing a lot more of web site information, and in fact, we're creating a microsite specifically for this to push information out. And we are staffing. We've got all the normal signage and everything that we're going to be using, but we're also going to be having staff during peak periods working down in that area to help passengers. And then, finally, we're going to start using the social medias much more extensively because a lot of our travelers use Facebook and Twitter, and that's a good way for us to get the information out, too. So, as you'll see, we will be continually updating that communication program as changes occur.
Okay, questions for Dean? Dean, thanks for taking the time, and again, congratulations on your promotion. That's wonderful.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Thanks, Adam. Appreciate it. Okay, next, Mr. Lawson has some distinguished guests here that he'd like to introduce.
Well, I just wanted to welcome my mother and father-in-law from Fort Collins, Colorado, all the way here to Reno to see their son-in-law in action, and it was some 30 years ago that they gave their blessing for me to marry their oldest daughter, sitting out there, my wife, Diane. So, thank you all for coming, and what's for dinner?
Thanks for being here. And I can see you're still watching over your daughter, and that's rightfully so.
Keep an eye on this guy.
Okay, next we have, oops, let me do this here. Wait a minute. Next, we have presentation and recognition of volunteers for the City Clerk's Office. Linda.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Linda Patterson, City Clerk, for the record. We'd like to talk about some very special people that are here this afternoon that have been working in the City Clerk's Office for the last two years. They've saved us a lot of money and done some amazing jobs for us. In 2009, as you remember, there was a large staffing reduction of about 40%, and we began recruiting volunteers that year in March. We've had seven individuals come and work, serve as volunteers in our office, and I'd like to tell you some of the accomplishments that they had. We started out with 337 hours in 2009. That raised to 562 hours of volunteer work in 2010, and this year, we had over 623 hours. If you take the IRS value for the volunteer hours, it's a lot of money. As you can see there, I don't need to read that to you. But more than that is that with the integrity and the value that they bring as far as the customer service and the things that we do here for the community. These are just, I have pictures of three of them, so I asked them to come. Only a couple of them could not. Vicky and Donna could not be here today. Our first volunteer was Loretta Hadlock, and I'd ask Loretta to come up here with me. Loretta's one of our retirees from the Fire Department, and Loretta not only comes on council days to make sure that Kerry has someone that helps with answering the phone and the door, she also has been certified as a passport agent, so she actually takes passports, and she brings her little dog Leroy. You've probably seen him in the office.
How come we don't have accommodations?
I didn't think about it until today, but he wanted me to take him for a walk, so I'll give him your regards, Mayor.
You are spending more time here than most.
He does. He's quite amazing. And Donna Cameron also started in July of that year, and Vicky Prouser, and what we, and also Maureen. Maureen, would you join us up here, please? Please stand next to Loretta, that'd be great. Maureen, and Vicky, and Donna, and Loretta worked that year to build a master database for us of all of our documents. It had all been on WordPerfect. We moved it to an Excel spreadsheet, which is very easy to find things and helps us with our information, management information system. Then, in 2010, Patty Soen, Dave Hanson came, and David is here as well. David, if you want to join me up here. David actually worked with Donna Cameron and Kerry to create the weed abatement and to go out and take the photos for us, to send the letters out, and ask people to cut their weeds, and he worked the entire summer for us, did an amazing job. And last but not least is Mary Orr. And Mary, would you come join us as well? And Mary worked on a lot of things, but the biggest accomplishment that she and Donna worked on in 2011 was to move our information from our old website into our new website, and she spent countless hours just clicking and moving and clicking and moving. And as you can see, it takes a lot of people to respond and do the things that we do in the City Clerk's Office and to add the extra things that we do that we wouldn't be able if it was just the three of us that are currently employed. So, I want you to take the time to say thank you to these fine people, and please beg them to stay.
Thank you very much for all the work you do. Do you want me to hand out the certificates?
Yes, please.
And, you know, I don't know all of you very well, but I do know David. David is a Sparks High graduate, I believe class of 65, one year younger than I am, so we go back a long ways, and thank you, David, and thank you for the rest of you, for all that you do for the City of Sparks.
Stay in home.
Yeah, I didn't mean you had to stay for the meeting. If you do that, then you won't want to come back. Okay, next we have presentation of the 2011 Special Event Season and Review of the 2012 Special Event Season. Tracy Dominguez, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and Council members. My name's Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. Today, I want to do a presentation regarding the 2011 Event Season and a small preview at the end for 2012. As you may be aware, a lot of our events, actually all of our events, we no longer have city subsidies. We no longer have sponsorships with these various producers, so everyone's on the same playing field. We create accounts so that all the charges, indirect charges can be captured with that account, and then we bill out 100% of those charges back to the producer. So, example would be public, well, everything in community services, which is maintenance, electricians, parks, police, fire, all of those charges are charged back out. So, our goal is to be cost recovery on all of our events, and we're almost there. I broke it down into three venues. To begin, it's Victorian Square and/or the Plaza. We went from 30 to 43 major event days. 30's always been kind of our stock answer for that venue. There may be more or less, but we're definitely up to a solid 43, and that's programming going April through December with a million visitors. The first event on the calendar for that venue is the Wild West Rodeo produced by RTC. It's a two-day event, and about 1,500 for two days. They've had this event for two years now, and we expect them back in 2012. Arts in Bloom is presented by Sparks Florists, produced by the City of Sparks, typically on Mother's Day. We did successfully move this event from the Sparks Marina to the Victorian Plaza. It's just a lot easier logistically to get artists and their wares in and out of that venue than it was out at the Marina. Our attendance was low. This event is probably the most affected by weather, no matter what we try to do. It's been really difficult on this event. I am currently exploring options of, actually, Art Town is interested in having this as a part of their calendar, and I am considering moving it to July to make it a more successful event. So, that's a positive thing for that event in '12. Street Vibrations Spring Rally is produced by Roadshows Incorporated, June 3rd through the 5th. This was the fifth year on Victorian, and their estimated attendance was 13,000 people over three days. I get the estimated attendance from Chad Hawkins in the Police Department. Whole Foods Farmer's, Hometown Farmers Market was produced by the City of Sparks, Whole Foods being our title sponsor. We had some great challenges and changes over the last couple of years. We did downsize this event from a closed, large street festival down to just the Plaza. This new format brought our production costs way down. Over time, for example, this year averaged 1,800 a week compared to 5,800 in the old format. Our attendance did go down a little bit to 5,000 approximately each week for the 10 weeks. We hope to be cost recovery. Please be aware that most of our revenues come in the spring when we're recruiting new sponsors and new vendors, so we anticipate this to be cost recovery by the end of the current fiscal year. This is just your look at it for six weeks of the current calendar year. At the same time, we were concerned about the effects of them on the merchants down on the east end of Victorian Avenue, and they came together and produced their own event called Victorian Square, I'm sorry, Victorian Summer, and they held it on Thursday nights at the same time as Farmers Market. And we tried to do increased signage to encourage customers to realize there were two events going on, encourage two-way traffic to attend both events. Their attendance was a little lower than anticipated at approximately 500 per week, and they are trying to reorganize and do something again this year. So, hopefully, it'll be bigger and better and more successful for them. They were very pleased at the total cost. The original estimated cost for city service costs, not knowing because it was an unknown event, was over $25,000 for the entire summer, and the actual was the 7,600. So, they were very pleased with that. It was not a problem at all. Star Spangled Sparks is produced by Jonas Quagga's Nugget down on the square. Large, one-time event for about five hours, 50,000 people on the square. Hot August Nights, produced by Hot August Nights Incorporated, 132,000 over five days. Tony Marini, their new director, did a great job with this event. I think everybody has embraced him, and he's been wonderful to work with. Best in the West Nugget Rib Cook-Off, produced by The Nugget, six-day event. They're still holding steady at about half a million visitors, and the cost, city service costs are $84,000 for that event. Street Vibrations Fall Rally, produced again by Roadshows Incorporated. Estimated costs were just over, I believe, $30,000, but due to the event being cut short, the actual expenses were $11,000 for the event. This is only the second year that this event has been in Sparks for the fall, and the estimated attendance was 7,500 for the three days that were conducted. For a five-day event, had it not been cut short, the cost would have been approximately $27,000. These costs do not capture everything involved with police and the ongoing investigation and, you know, everything going on with the shooting incident. These are just strictly what was involved with producing the event. Hometown Christmas, we just had that. Thank you to those of you who attended. It is presented by Intuit, produced by the City of Sparks, and these are still rough numbers, actually put together right before the event. Our numbers were a little bit low. The tree lighting was great. I think that was our largest attendance to date since we moved it to Friday night. The parade attendance was down a bit. We had incredible weather. Our parade entries and participation was up, but I think that it just looked, the crowds looked a little lighter to me.
Too much stuff going on.
There was a lot going on that day, so, but it was still a very successful event, and many thanks to Hot August Nights, who helps us pull this parade off, and Kelly Hanson, who's all I've got left in event production. So, they did a great event. So, with the big events in mind, I did a quick budget review for you here, and there'll be another bar graph at the end to show you the totals. For special events in '11 at Sparks Marina, we had 11 major event days. In general, we had 345,000 park visitors. It's a very busy park. If you don't, you know, visit it, there's people walking around that park any time of day. A lot of these are park rentals, and we are starting to include them as events because they are involving the community. They are not all City of Sparks producers, per se, meaning they live in Sparks. They are in the Truckee Meadows. These are the more popular and ongoing events. They're now annual events at Sparks Marina Park. And I'll go just through. And I'll go just through a couple of them. The bigger one is Star Spangled Sparks, which is produced by the Northern Nevada Chamber of Commerce. This is the day event. Estimated attendance from one day was 13,000 people. Sandcastle Soraya was new this year, produced by the City of Sparks. And all of the funding that was provided by tourism and marketing did go into this event. The attendance was lower than expected and still be evaluating this, if whether or not to bring it back. If we do bring it back, I will be seeking an outside producer to do it, not for the City of Sparks to produce. And one of the sculptors, sand sculptors is interested. But if we do this again, I really want to up the media and educate the public in our community what this event was about. I think we'll get a better attendance. They, those that participated, the sand sculptors, loved the venue. They thought it was great. They just love the venue. And they do sculptors all around the world. Shields Kids Triathlon, produced by the City of Sparks, is getting more successful as we go. And we had 134 athletes. So I expect this event to only grow. Our Shields Turkey Trot, produced by the City of Sparks also, is always on Thanksgiving Day. And that is now held in front of Shields in the Legends Parking Lot. What a great success that is to have them as our title sponsor. This year, pre-registration had 1,500 people. We had another 350 on race day. So each year we're growing a little bit, but we went, we had 1,800 the year before. So we went up another 130 for the event. Great weather day, which helps a lot. We had some growing pains, even though it was the 13th annual, there were some growing pains. We have to double up on a lot of our supplies now. Marina events in a budget review. I included all of our park rentals, not just the ones that I highlighted on that first screen, to give you a feel for what goes on at the Marina budgetarily. And it's already getting very booked up for 2012. 2011 at Gold Needle, this is very hard to capture because there's tournaments out there every weekend, just about. But we're at 700,000 park visitors in 2011. These are just, it's just a sampling of some of the major tournaments. And I don't have the numbers for you today, but I can get them. If you want the economic impact in Sparks, it's just tremendous with several teams coming from out of the area. We also have our youth sports leagues that include Pop Warner Football, CRU Football, Sparks Little League, Northern Nevada Soccer League, Babe Ruth, Fast Pitch, AYSO, and Great Basin Youth Soccer League that are out there playing all the time, all their practices and all their games. Another event that we do on the side is the Sparks Annual Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament. We did try a new facility this year at Red Hawk. And due to staff's incredible efforts, Andre did a great job on this, we made $5,700, which goes into benefiting our youth scholarship fund. And thank you very much for the 84 participants that came. We hope they enjoyed their, that event. Here's a quick bar graph for you. This is what you see every year. Maybe you haven't seen it, but I know it's been presented to redevelopment agency meetings. It's the main events, the big ones, if you will. And I compared, I just keep the graph going every year. At the bottom, that's different, though I have a fiscal year 11 and a calendar year 11. So your calendar year 11 number, that's where we stand after one whole season of events. So it's really hard for me sometimes to break this out by fiscal year because the fiscal is right in the smack dab middle of event season. So for me, it's actually easier to show you calendar year. As you can see, we're narrowing that gap between expenses and revenues. And lastly, but not least important, is 2012 calendar expects to be the same with an addition of these potential new events. And the reason I say potential is because I do not have signed contracts at this time, but I do anticipate them. We've had ongoing talks for many months on the first two. Upstate Watercraft Promotions Tour, this is a professional watercross and beach volleyball event for June 30th, July 1. They, if you imagine motocross on water, that's what this is. It's heats of jet skis racing and they also do some pretty amazing tricks. And I have a real short video to show you on that. There will be beach volleyball as well. Expedition Man Endurance Festival is a local promoter. This might be the first, it is the first iron distance triathlon race in Northern Nevada. This gentleman is really facing his challenges head-on, having to cross state line, county lines, city lines. I mean, this event starts at Zephyr Cove with the two and a half mile swim. And the run, it will end at the Sparks Marina Shields area, August 25th. So keep your eye out for that one. I have encouraged the Expedition Man to apply for tourism and marketing dollars. On behalf of Upstate Watercraft Promotions, I will be applying for some funding to help be the host city for that event. And then the Brew Fest, and they have the paperwork, but haven't turned it in yet. We're encouraging them for September or October on Victorian Square. And then Half Marathon, we're trying to encourage for December, since we're kind of weak in the winter months, is to do a Santa-themed half marathon produced by Adrenaline Sports. And part of their registration fee includes the Santa getup. It's very cute. So we're hoping to see that occur. And then if I could, real quick, just show you. Do this at my desk. There it goes. Is there a way to do volume on that, Linda?
That was you, Gina?
It was.
I guess you don't really need the volume. But this is their promo DVD. This will be the first time that this event comes to the West Coast. They're all on the East Coast. So this would be, this is something we already know. We really have to educate our community and the public to generate interest for them to attend this event, in addition to everyone that follows this event. But it will be the first time coming out West. They are professional athletes. They get up to 85 miles an hour, which makes me a little nervous, but they've seen the lake. They know how big our lake is. We did recruit this person. RSCBA assisted us in getting them to our fam, a familiarization tour. So they came and saw the event. And then when I went down to the teams conference in Vegas in October, met with them again. And that's when we realized they were really serious. And are planning to come as long as the funding is there. There will be national attention on this. We will be involved in a 30-minute television spot. They have their own television network that follows them. So we'll have a lot of publicity on this event when they come in June.
Question, is that it, Trace?
Yes, it is, if you have any questions.
Question, Mr. Smith?
With Adrenaline Sports there, or the jet skis, RSCBA is already committed to funding them?
A portion of it, correct.
Okay, alright.
Yes.
Great, good job, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, in the Upstate Watercraft, they have the beach volleyball. Are they going to be using the cove for the beach volleyball? Or is it going to be on the other side where the?
They are going to be using everything on the peninsula. It works better for them. They might use the two courts on the north side of the lake. But we're going to move some sand. And actually, there's a CIP project for redesign of the peninsula that'll be completed on time. And that will allow them to set up three portable, full-size beach volleyball courts.
Right on the peninsula?
Right on the peninsula, on the east end of the beach. We're making the whole peninsula more event-friendly. So we're creating more turf, making the beach a little bit smaller since it's not a designated swimming area anymore. And the plan is to just make it more event-friendly. But we've made sure that we haven't reduced the beach so much that this event can't happen.
Well, my thoughts were with the Sandcastle Soraya, if you can do them both together. But that seems like an awful lot of going on down at the.
It would be a lot going on.
I mean, you'd get some exposure for it, but.
It would be a lot. But there's potential. You might be able to do that.
Well, good job. I mean, this is.
Thank you.
And the fam tour was excellent.
Thank you. It was a lot of people's efforts that made that possible.
You've got some good stuff coming out of it, too.
Adrenaline Sports was at fam tour also. So we're continuing talks with them.
And they could eat some ribs, too, those guys. Exactly.
They love the rib cook-off.
Mr. Kerrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. Tracy, can you make sure when they do the promotion on that, it's the Sparks Marina in Sparks?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes, I will. That is, yes, a sensitive topic, I know. Anytime it says it's in Reno, it drives me crazy.
Okay, thanks Tracy, good job.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion. Consent items 5-1 through 5-7. Ms. Ratty?
Move to approve consent agenda items 5-1 through 5-7.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve consent items 5-1 through 5-7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, let's move on to general business. Okay, 6-1. Consideration of possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointment to the airport, Noyes Advisory Panel and Parks and Recreation Commission for possible action. Mr. Driscoll? Okay. Do you have the names on there? Mr. Kerrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we appoint Georgia Graham to the Airport Noyes Advisory Panel and Thomas Cornell to the Parks and Recreation Commission as requested by the mayor.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Kerrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith to make the appointments as recommended by the mayor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Sorry about that, Steve. I forgot to tell you that we were going to be doing that. Okay, let's move on. Let's move on to 6.2. Presentation and possible discussion of roles and responsibilities of the Washoe County Home Consortium. Mr. Rundell? This is the Washoe County, not Pershing County, okay?
Or Lyon.
Or Lyon. Excuse me, I meant Lyon. Pershing is Love Lock, I'm sorry. Lost my head. Lock your love.
Good afternoon, Jim Rundell, Senior Planner, here to present the roles of the Washoe County Home Consortium. Last year, or earlier this year, at the Regional Planning Governing Board meeting, we had an untimely contract item come to the governing board prior to it going to the city council. It was just because of the timing of the way that governing board, once a month, once every other month, governing board worked out and then the council meetings worked out. But at the meeting, there was some discussion that we should come to the individual municipalities, the county commission and the City of Reno and City of Sparks council and present the roles. So what we've done here is we worked on a collaborative presentation. All three jurisdictions should be getting the same presentation from their individual representative. Okay. So the housing, home consortium was established in 1994. The members are the City of Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County. Other participants are the Technical Review Committee, which I represent for the City of Sparks. And there's also one technical representative from the other jurisdictions, including regional planning. There's also a citizens representative from each of the three jurisdictions on that technical review committee and then one at-large appointment. Those people, the TRC, report to the directors, which are the two city managers and the county manager. And then those, the directors, that make recommendations to the Regional Planning Governing Board. The goals of the TRC are to provide affordable housing to low-income households, expand the capacity of nonprofit housing providers, strengthen the ability of state and local governments to provide housing, and leverage private sector participation. Those goals were set by Housing and Urban Development in the 1990 National Affordable Housing Act. Eligible activities include homeowner rehabilitation, homebuyer activities, rental housing, and tenant-based rental assistance. The priorities for funding were recently set by the Technical Review Committee and endorsed by the directors and then approved by the Regional Planning Governing Board. The Level 1 priorities, projects must provide units at or below 40% of the area median income for family units, at or below 45% of the area median income for senior projects. And they must have a memorandum of understanding for services. Projects that provide permanent housing, especially in conjunction with the supportive services for individuals and households with special needs and/or emerging services, emerging from homelessness, must have supportive services. And these are the priorities, including the Level 2 priorities that were recently reviewed by applicants. And the applications were submitted last week to the TRC. So the TRC will be reviewing those. This is supposed to represent the home funds allocated from HUD and also from the State of Nevada. I wanted to show that the funding is down from last year. But it also will be significantly down next year as recently the HUD took a 38% budget cut in Washington DC. So this year, we are, we do have a good amount of funding, but next year will be significantly shorter. We are anticipating. This chart here represents a flow chart, though I don't believe it shows the flow very easily. You can see there's arrows going all over the place. So I think that this slide is more appropriately titled something to the effect of participating jurisdictions when it comes to allocating funding and approving a project. I think we have a better process or flow in a slide in just a few minutes. This slide here represents some of the projects approved since 2005. In the last five years, the home consortium has assisted with the building of 325 new units, along with over 400 units being rehabbed. During the same period of time, the home consortium funded homeowner down payment assistance, homeowner rehab programs, rental and utility deposit assistance, tenant-based rental programs assisting renters with rent for up to 24 months, and a CHODO operating funds to assist the CHODO developers with operating funding to continue to do affordable housing projects. The projects that are in the City of Sparks that are on this list are the Southwest Village Rehab, the C Street Rehab, the Bethel Plaza Phase 2 Pilgrim Rest, and the City Hall Senior Apartments. This slide here represents a better depiction of the process for the housing consortium. The Technical Review Committee calls for applications in October. Just last week, the TRC received applications. We will be holding public hearings to, as we review those, applications for funding. And then we will, the individual jurisdictions, City of Sparks, City of Reno, and Washoe County, will all consider allocations of pro-rata share for the home entitlement funds. And that will occur in February. From those meetings, we will, the Technical Review Committee will provide a recommendation to the directors, the two city managers and the county manager. The managers will then forward a recommendation to the governing board. The managers will then forward a recommendation to the governing board. At the governing board meeting, uh, the governing board will have the opportunity to ratify or not ratify the recommendations from the directors, who received the recommendations from the Technical Review Committee. We did receive, the TRC had a meeting this morning, and we have received three applications for funding. Uh, we're, the, uh, the TRC will now review those applications to ensure that they were complete applications, and then we will be reviewing them and holding public hearings at the beginning of next year. And that concludes my presentation. We also have Linda here from the City of Reno, if we, if, Linda Wildman, if we have any further questions.
Questions for Mr. Rundle or Ms. Wildman? Okay, good presentation there, James.
Thanks.
No questions, that's always good. Okay, let's move on to six point three, discussion of possible approval of the city's two thousand and twelve federal platform. Mr. Mayberry?
Wish I had a presentation like Tracy, but this is not as exciting. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Adams, Mr. Driscoll, I'm Adam Mayberry, your Community Relations Manager. The item for today is the city's proposed two thousand and twelve federal platform for the city council approval. In the past, the platform has always accompanied, uh, the state legislative platform, but this year, there, there will be two separate documents, so we'll talk about the state, uh, platform in, uh, in two thousand and twelve. Today, we're just focusing solely on the federal congressional platform. It's, um, departure from years past because it doesn't necessarily consist of dollar requests. Uh, the current legislative rules in the Congress have prevented the practice of earmarking, which as you know, is a congressional provision that directs approved funds to be spent on specific projects. So, the presentation is, is essentially the platform, which will spiral bound and begins with a letter from the mayor and the council, uh, with some key highlights on the challenges the city has faced over the last few years in terms of its finances. It's still important that our congressional delegation is mindful of our needs, and that's the purpose of this platform, uh, help us identify grant opportunities, help us participate in the regulatory process. Um, so, it's a little different than what we've done in the past, we have some illustrations that show before and after. We've broken it down into four primary planks, first one being public safety, uh, which includes a discussion on the large number of foreclosed homes in the city. The city supports federal legislation that will force the banking industry to play a more transparent role in disclosing the ownership of homes, uh, and act more quickly to fore- on foreclosed properties. Uh, plank also addresses opportunities, uh, to, for the federal delegation to help us, help them be mindful of our needs for public safety, and highlights some of the challenges we face with our police and, as well as our fire. We were successfully receiving the COPS grant, as you recall, in two thousand and ten, our current COPS grant is on pending status, uh, which means that in two thousand and twelve, there's a good chance that we could still receive the, the COPS grant. However, I'm told that, uh, the rules appear to have changed where there is a matching component, whereas before, there was not a matching component, so we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it. Uh, fire will also address some of the challenges we're facing in terms of the shortage of our firefighters and how we're doing there. Um, the SAFER grant was something that, uh, prevented a layoff, uh, which we were not successful in, in, uh, attaining the, the SAFER grant, although we did, uh, we were eligible for it. Second plank really focuses on community assets. Uh, while the flood project is certainly part of that, uh, we're really zeroing in on the, the Sparks project specifically, and we're talking a lot about the Community Development Block grants and the importance of that program despite the funding, uh, that cuts that have occurred over the last year of nearly twenty percent. Uh, the CDB, Community Development Block grants are important for a number of reasons, uh, because they help those that with low income make emergency repairs, there's a first-time home buyers program. Uh, we've used a number of our CDBG funds to help improve our infrastructure and renovate our sidewalks, curbs, and gutters, and you can see the pictures before and after. We've used some of our funds to help improve some capital, uh, projects in our, in our local schools here in the city. Uh, the third plank really focuses on sustainable, uh, sustainable energy and touts our success with some of the solar panel or the photovoltaic projects that we've had in, in the city, and we've been successful with, uh, federal stimulus dollars as well as NV Energy grants to build those projects, where we have a new general fund dollars, and of course, the savings in, in, uh, in energy, we can pass on to other priority projects. And of course, the fourth plank really focuses on transportation, uh, particularly in this case, the Care and Pyramid Way intersection improvement, which is generally federally fully funded, but it's important that we keep that funding intact, uh, and that the congressional delegation is mindful of this priority project and help us keep, keep it moving forward on some of the regulatory matters. And even, uh, looking out in the future, we have the Pyramid Highway and the US 395 Connector Project, which is a critical project for Sparks, a long-term planning project. Um, certainly, there's need to be, be mindful of needs for, uh, for either, uh, formula funding or some of the discretionary grant funding that could be used for this project down the road, as it's in a number of phases, and working very closely with our, our partners at the RTC. So, uh, with another illustration and, and, of, of the project. So, the presentation will certainly spark a lot of discussion and interest. Um, it will be, be meeting with all of our congressional delegation members here locally. Uh, we had a successful trip about three weeks ago in Washington. Uh, there's still a lot of interest in Sparks and a lot of compliments for the work that all of you are doing and your dedication to our community. Uh, be happy to, uh, to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Mayberry? Mr. Kerrigan, still not here? Mr. Kerrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. Adam, on the, uh, COPS and SAFER grant, I, I think that we ought to be really careful on that, as far as, you know, it's a good program as long as the, some of the criteria for it stays reasonable. I know that we turned down one for the, uh, Fire Department because of the seniority and, and no layoff clause, I think that's the reason we, we... So, I, I think, you know, it's good to take a look at that, keep an eye on that.
Certainly will, understood, thank you.
Thank you. So, this, uh, this is our platform that's gonna be sent out to our delegation?
That's correct, we'll meet with them personally and...
Once we, uh, approve it or...
That's right, that's right, once you approve it, and we'll, we'll make it public, we'll put it on our website, and, uh, I know our legislative team, which you and Councilwoman Ratty sit on, will, will regroup and have some local visits and, and talk next steps.
Okay. Questions? Do you wanna tell them about that, or just...
No, there's, there's several in there I'll talk to you about. I'd, I'd just like to see you after this.
Oh, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, is that it?
That's it, that's it.
Do we need to approve this now, Adam, or, uh... Yeah, okay. Ms. Ratty?
Two thousand and twelve federal platform.
Mr. Kerrigan?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Kerrigan to approve the platform, two thousand and twelve federal platform is outlined by Mr. Mayberry. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously.
Okay. Thank you.
Good job, Adam, appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to public hearings. Seven point one, public hearing, consideration of possible approval of the vacation of the southerly portion of Spanish Springs Road, public right-of-way from State Highway four forty-five Pyramid Way, easterly one thousand and twenty point five feet. And who's doing this one? Mr. Martini?
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here before you with a request to vacate public right-of-way. Uh, I prepared an overhead with the air photos. Uh, the right-of-way we're requesting abandonment of today is, uh, what was once going to be Spanish Springs Road. It was dedicated in nineteen seventy-eight to Washoe County as part of the Sky Ranch, I believe it's called, Unit One A subdivision. Uh, in two thousand and six, when this council annexed the OPL Ranch or Stone Brook Project, we became, uh, responsible for the southern portion of this right-of-way. Washoe County has made a request for us to abandon it, uh, back to them. They're gonna use it for the little park that's there. Uh, in September of this year, the Washoe County Commission approved abandonment of the northern portions of this right-of-way. What you're approving today is the abandonment of everything south of the dotted line across the middle. I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Questions for John? Okay, no questions, okay. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing to the audience, anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Any questions or looking for a motion? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the vacation of the southern portion of the Spanish Springs Road from Nevada State Highway four forty-five Pyramid Highway, easterly at a distance of one thousand twenty point five feet to Washoe County, as outlined by staff.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agenda item seven point one. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, seven point two, Linda, we're gonna continue, there was a problem with this agenda item.
For, continued to January ninth, two thousand and twelve. There was a failure to publish the first reading.
Okay, could I have a motion to that effect, please? Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we continue this item to date-specific January ninth.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to, uh, continue agenda item seven point two till the January ninth meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, moving on to comments from the city council or city manager. Mr. Smith?
Uh, just, uh, from me to everybody in the audience and all of our employees, I just wanna wish everybody Merry Christmas and your families a safe holiday.
Mr. Driscoll?
Mr. Mayor, I have some announcements. Um, the first is there is one vacancy in the Civil Service Commission for a term which expires June thirtieth in two thousand and fourteen. Also, two appointments to the Sparks Funding Commission will expire on December thirty-first. Each appointment is for a four-year term, which will expire December thirty-first of two thousand and fifteen. If you're interested in serving on either of these committees, please complete a volunteer application available on the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on City Services, then on Volunteering slash Get Involved, and then on Volunteer Application.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tracy, I should've done it while you were up in your presentation, but I just wanted to say, thank you and staff and everybody for another successful hometown Christmas. It was a great event. Uh, I heard an awful lot of compliments about things on out there this week, so thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, comments from the public? Whoops, sorry.
[inaudible]. I'd like to ask Mr. Krutz to give just a quick update
Oh, okay.
On the water leakage issue at the plant.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and members of the city council. For the record, Neil Krutz, Director of Community Services. Uh, you'll recall Friday that, uh, through Steve, we sent you an email, like you know, we had a little accident, our equipment failure out at the plant, treatment plant on Friday, uh, where a, uh, water line, uh, broke and took out an electrical cabinet and two computer control cabinets, uh, resulting in, uh, taking a significant portion of, of the facility away from computer control, and we had to go back to the old days where we were manually operating and, and testing things. Um, at that point in time, I had indicated that, uh, we thought we'd be able to get the electricity fixed over the weekend, which we did, but that I thought the computer control might take the better part of a week to reestablish. I am happy to report to you that as of this morning, we were able to dry out the computer parts, get them reinstalled, and the plant, as of this morning, was operating fully under computer control. Um, so that's, uh, kudos to the staff at Tomlerf. Uh, there was a, a large group of people that worked very hard all weekend long to get back to that, and, and, because certainly, we have a, a better controlled system when we, when we do it with computers. Um, you know, a portion of the, of the equipment, um, is planned to be replaced through a, an approval that you all granted here on the twenty-eighth. Um, so, you know, we look forward to completing that because that will upgrade our system and, and give us even, uh, even higher, you know, levels of reliability out there. Um, but the staff is, uh, is highly confident that the restored computer equipment will, uh, will hold over until we're able to complete that, uh, that upgrade. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And, uh, and one thing that's probably pretty important, uh, and I talked to Mr. Driscoll, we did not violate our permit in any way.
We did not.
Okay.
We did not.
That's very important.
Stayed well within the confines, it is incredibly important.
Okay. Any questions for Neil? Ms. Ratty?
I just wanted to ask that you pass on our thanks to the crew out there. I know that a lot of people worked a lot of extra hours on, on very short notice to get it done, and, um, that people that were thin in the ranks, and, um, so just, 'cause I'm sure they jumped right back into the normal process, so tell them thank you.
I will, I will pass that along, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, moving on to comments from the public. Anyone in the public who wanna make a comment? Okay, from me and on behalf of myself and the city council, Merry Christmas to everyone out there, Happy New Year, we'll see you next year for our first meeting on January ninth. Mr. Smith? Okay. We'll call the water Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of twelve, twelve, eleven, with a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith?
Here.
Agency Secretary Patterson here, agency members, Ratty?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Kerrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Acting Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Okay, would anybody in the audience like to speak, any public comment? Seeing none, bring it back to the agency. Um, we need, um, three point one, consideration of possible approvals of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting minutes of November twenty-eighth. Whoop, second? We have a motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, consent items, um, there is one, five point one, report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of November tenth, two thousand and eleven, through November twenty-third, two thousand and eleven. Move to approve, Mr. Chair?
Second.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll open it back up for public comment. Anybody in the audience wanna speak? Seeing none, bring it back to the agency. And we are adjourned.